Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. And we're called to order. Commissioner Lucas, if you did the prayer and pledge, please.
Please stand.
By your head. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for the opportunity to live in this amazing community. We ask that you be with us tonight as we conduct the city's business. Help us to make the right decisions that are best for this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, just a reminder that you're adding item F.
Yes. We need to add to the agenda 11F, new, under new business.
Mayor, that's simply a tax rate resolution confirming the work that was done in the past. That resolution goes to the State Board of Equalization. It will go there tomorrow. That's the last item we need for the approval of the city's budget.
Thank you. So do I hear a motion that we, do we need to approve the amended agenda?
I need to amend my.
It's been added. You're fine with the motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item five, public hearings. There are none tonight. Item six, citizen comments. Ms. Johnson, do we have any?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, your job has got easier. Public announcements, awards and recognitions. Staff comments, and I believe that essentially have implemented some new safety protocols that the city manager will be doing all the reports. So.
Yes, Mayor, I will attempt to go through these. And thank you, thank you for that. Obviously, these are some challenging times for staffing and otherwise, and we're just attempting to be careful. So I'll get through the police and fire reports. If there are any questions, I'll attempt to answer those. If not, if I can't answer it, I'll get that information back out to all of you via email. The emergency response calls for the fire department for July were 72. It's down from last year. We had, in 2020, we had 105 calls. This is only the second month of this year where the calls have been down, which is a bit surprising, but good news for the community. So we were happy to see those calls down just a little bit. Significant events for the month. These have been fairly standard. We had four reporting building fires, building fires that resulted in a fire extinguished. One patient extricated from a vehicle crash. You may recall that we recently installed new extrication equipment, purchased the last of that of all of our vehicles. So that's, we don't want to use those, but it's nice to have that equipment there, and it is used. Seven minor first aid efforts at the July 3 event while they were working on standby. 14 overlapping incidents occurred this month. That's where they assist with another, another agency or service. Eight automatic or mutual aid calls to surrounding departments. And 30 public education or outreach opportunities, plus several hundred interactions on July 3. Obviously, July 3 was a big event for us. Having seven incidents that they responded to on the event was a little more than we thought, but it just speaks of the staffing. They did a really good job, so we're glad to have them there on that event. Luckily, all of those were minor. On the next page, dispatch time to arrival was an average of 6 minutes and 52 seconds. Average operating time on scene was an hour, 5 minutes and 32 seconds. Smoke alarms, we're still working to distribute smoke alarms. Those are free to the community. They can reach out to the police department via email or by call to the station, 615-799-3473. We'll arrange to get those out to the community if they're requested. And then obviously, 911, we continue to have issues oddly enough where someone will call the direct line for the fire department, and it will be a call for emergency service. So we just want to remind everyone, if there's a question about whether or not it's emergency service, call 911 or let dispatch make that decision. Calling the station simply slows that down. So if you know it's not emergency, don't dial 911. If you're not sure, please do. Calls by the, monthly calls by type, obviously, our rescue and emergency calls are the most that we see, about 71%. That's average. We haven't seen any change in that, and we understand that that's just going to be the case for the service we provide. On the next slide, we are working with some information to make sure. We talked about growth development, where these things take place. For those who are unfamiliar with the system, typically work off hot spots or hot areas for your calls. You work off this for your existing calls, and then you consider that in your planning for other phases where you're going to grow. So if you look at our, obviously, our hottest or warmest area for calls, that's right in the center of town. It's on the bottom center of that slide you see there. The next area at Fairview is 196. Obviously, that intersection encompasses some, some area there. You have the ballpark included in that area and the nursing home just to the left of there. So I'm sure some of those calls will, will circulate within that hotspot. And then lastly, or the third warmest spot, let me back up one. The third warmest spot is 100, I mean, 96 and 40. Obviously, you have the commuter traffic that goes through that intersection, traffic accidents, all sorts of that thing. So we expect that to be there. As we start looking at future growth and doing some planning, we will do some overlay. We're working now to figure out, obviously, what the hotspots are, but what the impact of our development will be. We know that at some point, we're going to need to build a new fire station on Highway 96. As you look at the map and look at where our intent is for a new fire station, and we're not proposing this today, we're proposing property soon rather than construction. But you'll see the small hotspot or the smallest of the red areas is the, the round dot on Highway 96, just below the, the Highway 96 marker. That will likely be the area where we look to purchase property for a second fire station because of its proximity to all those areas of calls for service. So as we get into that, the hotspot mapping will help us as it relates to growth and development. Monthly training hours for, for the fire department were 514. And the photos on the next slide are just some of the photos from the training that, that we've done throughout the month in the fire department across all three shifts. For the police department, we, our staffing is down one or was in July, from 23 last year to 22 this year. We did have one person resign. We're in the process of attempting to fill that position. Our overtime last year was two hours. Our overtime this year was 38.5 hours. That is a bit of a carryover. Because of the way our budget fell this year, we had a partial payroll fall at the end of June, 1st of July. So that's how that hits our budget for those hours. We also had some increased staffing for the July 3 event. Obviously, last year, there wasn't a July 3 event, so that's where you get those extra hours for there. And then training hours last year, 175. The lack of the July 3 event for last year afforded training time. Obviously, we did not have the training hours for July this month. I suspect that those will pick up. Those are also not equal across the year. So those are recorded at the time they happen, and that availability just wasn't there in July of this year. Total calls for the police department, we were at 915 in June of '21, 923 in July. So pretty consistent across those two months. Nothing alarming on the calls. And the next report, the, the arrest total, 96 for July. That's up from 61 in June. The other calls for service and activities are about the same. Citations were down a little bit in July, likely because of some of the work scheduling that we had. And our traffic accidents for July were down compared to June, which is always good. Anytime we see a reduction in traffic accidents, that's a, that's a good number for everyone. Those are the police department reports and the fire department reports. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. Again, if I can't answer it, I'll be glad to get that information out to all of you. If there are none, we'll move on to the city manager report. I have several bits of information for you tonight. The first is a packet of documents I distributed to each of you just a few minutes ago. That's for your review. That's the city's financial report for the fiscal year, for the month, June of 2021. That's the last month of our fiscal year that ended June 30, 2021. I can report to you tonight that our unaudited numbers, and we work off of unaudited numbers until we're audited. Our cash position for the city of Fairview, June 30, 2021, our cash position increased appropriately, approximately $1.1 million over June 30, 2020. Each of our departments were under budget. Our revenues exceeded our budgets, and any excess dollars that we had that weren't allocated to some budget going forward were put into the reserve. As an example, we started the year last year with $700,000 in reserve. We ended the year, this year, with $1 million in reserve. The other $700,000 were in the general fund operating account, and you'll see referenced on, on there. I believe we were at $2.4 million, or $2.2 million in that account this year. We were at $1.3 million last year. So it's taken us about four years to build that entire budget. The good part of that is, as we go forward with all of our budget work, the next 18 months will be pretty progressive for the city because the community will be able to see dollars reinvested in the community rather than dollars being spent. And you always want to make sure that we can see visibly those dollars being reinvested. So as we get through the remainder of the budget this year, certainly into fiscal year 2023, beginning next year, and through the bond issue, which is a big commitment for the city, what we will see for the first time in quite some time is the actual reinvestment and growth in our community, which is our, one of our responsibilities for being here. So I like to thank the staff, obviously, but thank the elected officials of the community. There's been a lot of work over the last few years to get us where we are. That budget report's reflective of that. In the next 12 to 18 months, when we see road projects taking place, stormwater projects taking place, and the community can see the result, that's easier, better for all of us. So that, that report's been a long time coming, but it is an exceptional report for the city our size. We look forward to putting those dollars to use. As a part of that, the fiscal year 2022 budget, which we are in now, that started July 1, has been approved by the state, pending the receipt of the Tennessee Board of Equalization Property Tax Resolution, which you have before you tonight. That's a one-line resolution. We'll get that to the State Board of Equalization tomorrow. We'll get our budget approval from the state. We will then take that budget approval and move right into the bond issue so we can start getting some, some dollars in place to do some of the capital work. I have a bond schedule for you. I'm going to email you this information, but just kind of have an idea of what we're working on so everyone knows where we are in the, the planning process for our capital. For our bond schedule, the pro, the schedule is right now for the city to, to name a financial advisor. We have to name a financial advisor as we go through the bonding process. You have two components to the bond. You have your bond attorney or your bond counsel, and there your legal arm for issuing your bonds. Your financial advisor puts the financial plan together for you. They're the one who helps you adopt the 20-year bond, the 30-year bond, all of those things that come with that. So the schedule right now is that we will have for you a financial advisor selection in September, likely at the second board meeting in September. The purpose of that will be simply to name the financial advisor so they can guide us through this process. Standard practice, but you need to have that work done. My suggestion to the board is to use the same financial advisor that we used for the 2014 bond issue. He's worked with us exceptionally through the process since the 2014 bond issue. He knows our financials pretty well. He will likely also request a bond rating from Standard and Poor's. We had our bond rating in 2014, which I believe was an A-. We've since moved up to AA-, as you're aware, we, we had that. Standard and Poor did that for us. However, due to the AA- bond rating last, last time we issued bonds for the bond that's still outstanding, we purchased bond insurance, which is standard. Bond insurance is a cost that you pay that basically pays for an improved bond rating. Given our bond rating now, we're at a AA- right now. I expect us to move up to maybe an, a AAA+, we'll move up, or maybe a AAA. But obviously, we will not be buying bond, bond insurance with this bond issue. We're substantially ahead where we were financially, and that's great news for us. But the financial advisor selection I'll have for you likely the second meeting in September. The bond counsel selection, the bond attorney selection, and this will be done on the advice of our financial advisor, will likely be the first meeting in October. So we can move right ahead with the financial advisor, then the bond counsel. Once we do that, the anticipation is, or the schedule is that we would go to the bond market sometime in December, likely early December. If we make it to the bond, if we make it to the bond market in December, we should see the receipt of bond funds to the city by mid to late February. That will, that will come into play for us for a couple of capital projects we know we have ongoing, most importantly, schedule-wise, is the playground project. So that's the process we will go through, and we, we expect that that schedule will not change. So that, that will, that will be the schedule. And again, I'll get all this out to you because there are several moving parts to that. As it relates to the playground schedule, kind of transitioning to, to this, obviously, we're using bond funds for the, for the majority of the playground, approximately $600,000. That number may fluctuate just a little. If any, it may fluctuate up a little bit depending on how we round some numbers on the bond, but my guess is it'll be right at the $600,000. So with that, there are some things we need to address, and I'll get all of this information out to you as well for scheduling purposes. If we go to the bond market in December and we have bond funds available in February, and I expect that schedule to hold, then we're going to need to move fairly quickly on the playground equipment purchase, delivery and installation. So my suggestion, and again, this, you'll get this in an email schedule, but my suggestion is to have a playground work session with the VOC, the Park and Landscape Board, whoever else will be a part of this at the September 16 VOC meeting. We should by that date have a pretty good idea of what the cash on hand is for donated funds, what the bond funds look like, and come to some agreement on what we're actually going to purchase, equipment otherwise with this thing. We need to have that discussion out loud and figure out what this looks like. My suggestion is we have a work session specific to the playground on September 16. My suggestion is we have a second work session at the October 7 VOC meeting. So if we do that, then that, there are three weeks in between. Whatever we learn at the first September 16 meeting, we can carry over to the October 7, figure out what other discussions we need to have based on equipment scheduling for all that. If we do that, then we should be able to place the order for the playground equipment no later than early December. Takes about 75 to 90 days to get that equipment in, and you pay for the equipment upon delivery, not upon order. So that, that schedule helps us. So if we have those work sessions, if we have to add another one in November, just to solidify where we are, place the order in December, we should have playground equipment on the ground, on site in February, no later than early March. If that schedule holds, and I think it will, then we should be able to have the playground equipment, everything except the fence, installed by the end of May. We're planning on having a grand opening on July 2. I think we can have the playground equipment installed by the end of May, everything except the fence. Have that be just a soft opening. We wouldn't really announce the opening because there's still some work to. It would still be usable, but we have to install a fence, clean up, that sort of thing. Have the soft opening through June and have the grand opening on Saturday, July 2. So we, that will be in concert with our July 3 event, which would obviously be the next day. So again, I'll get the schedule out to you, but the, these dates appear to work really well for what we're doing. So the reason I give you that information so you'll know is, if we anticipate bond issued dollars becoming available in mid to late February, and we anticipate playground equipment being delivered in mid to late February, it's possible that playground equipment could be delivered prior to bond proceeds being available. So let's say right now, we're talking $750,000, round figures for where we are. Once we get into the bond issuer proceeds, our reserve fund, which tonight is at $1,200,000, our reserve fund is set up in such a way where those dollars can be accessed by the board if the board passes a resolution stating the use of the bond, or use of the, the reserve funds and how the funds will be repaid. So in this instance, to make sure we're okay with scheduling, I would propose a resolution to the board allowing the use of reserve funds to pay for the playground equipment in case the playground equipment arrives before bond funds arrive, and then refund the reserve fund with the bond dollars once the bond dollars. That's allowable. We just have to pass a resolution in the beginning stating we can reimburse ourselves for certain projects. So as we get into that, we'll, we'll prepare those things. But the next 90 days for our financials, equipment for the playground, and getting into the first of the year are a pretty accelerated pace. So if I get resolutions to you for the use of reserve funds, the pre-use and reimbursement of bond funds, that's the purpose of what all of that is, to make sure we don't miss any steps in, in this process as we get forward to that capital. So the last part of the capital discussion we have is, Kevin and I are working on a capital plan for the roads, the projects, the bridge work, anything else that we would do on the capital improvements as far as road improvements to be included in the bond fund. Our goal right now is to have those estimates pretty firm by September 30. So as soon as we get those, we can ratify those projects, ratify the budgets for those projects, roll those into the bond issue, and be ready to go a little bit ahead of schedule when it comes time to make the bond decision. So I know that's a lot, but there are a lot of moving pieces of this thing, and we just want to make sure we don't miss anything. So we'll get that information out, out to you. And the last two things I have for you tonight are some good news on the public works side. We were able to hire one crew member for public works. We've got someone on board to help us out. He starts Monday morning, and we're really excited to have him here. That will give us the ability to divide up into crews on certain projects so we can get a little work done and get spread out. Right now, we've just been really tight on staffing. And the last thing I have for you is the Bell Haven subdivision, which is the large subdivision that's been in play for some time over on Northwest Highway. It's about 700 homes, give or take, depending on where the numbers are and how that shakes out. That is scheduled to be brought to the Planning Commission on September 14. The B, the Planning Commission on September 14. Because that's a big project, and because we want to make sure that everyone can get their questions answered for that, we're proposing a 5:30 PM work session for that subdivision on Tuesday, September 14. So that will be the Tuesday evening before the Planning Commission. One week before that, on September 7, we're planning a come and go work session, if you will, a familiarization with that project that will be here in City Hall, and that will be from 1 PM to 6 PM. The developer will be here, engineer will be here, all the representatives for that project will be here. So you can come and go, take some time to learn about the project, get questions answered, that sort of thing. Take a little time to look at that, be prepared for that. Follow up if you have those on September 14 and move forward there. So that calendar, we'll go out tomorrow. We'll get those invitations out. But just as a reminder of those, if you just made notes of those dates, we'll get that information out to you. So as far as my report, that's all I have for you. I'll be glad to answer any questions on any of those. But if, saying nothing else, we are incredibly busy, and we have a lot of projects going on, and they are all positive for us. So we look forward to continuing that, that list.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Hearing none. Item nine, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10, old business, there is none. 11, new business, 11A, beer permit for new owner at 2655 Fairview Boulevard, Fairview Market, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do we, is the new owner here? Do you want to come up and introduce yourself and? If you'll tell us your, your name and, I guess, your address.
My name is Thol Patel, and I'm a new owner for Fairview Martin.
Well, welcome to Fairview.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Does anyone have any questions of the new owner? Hearing none. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11B, resolution 1921, Vice Mayor.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of service, Woodwick.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11C, resolution 2021, Vice Mayor.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of ser, of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of service, Fernbrook. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floors. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11D, resolution 2121, Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, designating items and materials as surplus and authorizing their disposal. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floors. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11E, resolution 22-21, Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to select the lowest responsible bidder for ADA and related improvements to the city commission chamber courtroom at City Hall. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson, I'll let you decide who the second was.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11F, resolution 23-21, Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, affirming the city's property tax rate for fiscal year 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Apologize.
That's okay.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler. Commissioner Butler.
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Mr. Lucas.
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Vice mayor.
I just want to say, I know that a lot of kids recently left and went to college, my son being one of them. So I just want to say that I'm, my thoughts are with the parents because I've been having a hard time with this. But anyway, my thoughts are with you because I, I get it, and let's keep Fairview beautiful by picking up trash and not throwing it out. Thank you.
I think tonight, I like to say that we know that the middle school is closed tomorrow, and I know some parents who have children who are homesick, and I'm certainly thinking about them and hoping that we turn the curve quickly to get this taken care of. And with that, I will enter kind of motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
And we're adjourned.